Welcome to the Village of Wapinjers Falls Monthly Regular Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees. For today, Wednesday, August 12th, 2020. Would you please get ready to say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any items of recognition or announcements or special events coming up? Cindy, you want to start? If you have anything? Concerts?
Yes, we have a concert coming up on August 21st in the Mizzier Park from 7:00 to 9:00. It is the Big Band Sound. And they have been practicing actually in the Mizzier Park. So on August 5th, I did put out a little thing on Facebook. We didn't announce it just to say that they were there practicing. If anybody could hear the music, they're invited to come over to the park. We still had the circles for social distancing lined out. We did have about probably 15 people show up in the park and listen to them practice. A couple of little kids, they got a big kick out of them playing the Sesame Street theme song. So it was a funny evening. So we're looking forward to that concert in the park on the 21st. And then we'll have a 9/11 ceremony on 9/11 in the Mizzier Park at 6:00 PM. And we've also sent out a notice in the water bill with regards to a Halloween celebration, but I'll talk about that more in the rec report. That's it.
Okay. Anything else from any other organizations? Okay, Brian Lammers couldn't be with us last time we met because he was with the Wapinjers Falls Historic Society for their picnic. You want to report on anything, Brian?
Yes. It was, we had a really good turnout. Of course, I had a ball performing for our neighbors there. And they were selling T-shirts, the Chili Willie Ice Cream Truck came around. I saw a lot of our neighbors with their children, which was very good to see. And it was, it was good. It wasn't too hot. The weather, weather held up. It was a very, very, very nice evening. And I was very happy to help, help the Wapinjers Historical Society do their fundraising.
Okay. So the first item up on the agenda is a discussion of a public meeting we're going to be having on Saturday, August 15th. It starts at 10:30 in the morning and it's going to be on the lawn on the east side of the United Methodist Church. So that's the side that is across the street from the Funeral Home. And we will gather there. You must be wearing a mask to attend. There will be circles set up for social distancing. And at that meeting, we will be discussing seven, at least seven different projects. The first of which is the future use of the United Methodist Church, which closed after 150 years just recently and was purchased by a developer who wishes to work with the community, get input from the community to find out how the community would most like to see that space being used. Second on the list would be Falls View Park. There is a discussion of its use and its best way to be used as both a park and maybe as a, as a economic development structure. Mill Street Parking Lot. For many years, we've been talking about the possibility of replacing the Sweet Or building. It would not, it would still include parking on the first floor and it would also actually add a second level of parking. And the discussion would get people's feedback on what they would think about there being a third level of offices or residential development. Fourth is the Goring Hall Pavilion. So the Goring Hall project was shown on a meeting about a month ago and we're looking to get public input on that discussion. There's a discussion of the future use of Mary Ross Park and the Cobbler Shop at Franny Reese Park, as well as the Boathouse. Franny Reese Park looks like it's going to be finished by the end of the month. That's the schedule. And the Boathouse has restarted after many, many months of inactivity due to the pandemic and scheduling problems with the contractor who was working on that project. So before we get going, we do have a PowerPoint presentation of all of our past planning efforts. And we also are going to be releasing a video, which will not be shown here, but will be shown on Facebook. And it will be an intro to what we're trying to get done. And I urge you all to take a look at that. I might be able to play it at the end of the meeting. But while we're talking about these projects, we felt that it was important that the public and the board and everybody understand where we started, what we've done and where we would like to go in this overall strategy. So Corey Yusevich is here to go through the PowerPoint presentation. And are you going to share the screen, Corey, or do you want me to?
Let's see. Did that work? Am I?
Yeah.
Looking at my screen?
Yep. Let's just slide, do the slide. Yep, that's it. And if everybody wants to minimize their screen, you'll get less people and more presentation.
Yes, and I'd also like to say the video that's being released is a much more condensed version. So this will go a little longer, but the video is around five minutes long. All right. So welcome to the Village of Wapinjers Falls Community Vision Presentation. Here, we would like to honor the past and embrace the future. This presentation, as Matt said, will show what we have accomplished and what we plan to accomplish to achieve our community vision. And most importantly, we want your input on these upcoming projects. So at the end of this video, there will be a link to a survey where we can get your feedback on what you like, don't like, and what was missing that you might want to see. This is your community and we want to make sure that your voice is heard. So thank you for tuning in. In 2001, the Village's comprehensive plan finally updated since 1966. And then in 2007, with the loss of its own source of drinking water and 70% of its nearly 100-year-old infrastructure at or near failure, attention to village planning and revitalization became imperative. We are a walkable community set around a beautiful gorge and waterfall. And we decided that as a community, to tackle these problems with a revitalization strategy. This is to address our infrastructure for our community and hopefully last long enough for our children and even grandchildren. Today, as a result of that strategy, the village has a new water treatment facility with 100% solar power, miles of new water mains, sewer lines and streets, a brand-new village hall, a brand-new highway garage and a renovated police station, new parks and park equipment, sidewalks, period lighting and enhanced crosswalks. This was, of course, accomplished through partnerships with all levels of government. That includes county, state and even federal, not to mention all of the various agencies that have helped us out along the way. The village sought public input every step of the way with public meetings and planning efforts. And these are some of the things that have come out of that. So let's look further into what water and infrastructure has been improved and of course, what still needs improvement. When December of 2006, the village had no drinking water and had to purchase 100% of it from an outside source. We quickly organized to build a $5.7 million water treatment facility. And in 2013, we added solar power to make it 100% solar powered. Some streets would have as many as seven water main breaks a year. Over the next 14 years, we replaced four miles of water main. And obviously, as you can see here, the red is what it used to be. The blue is what has been updated since then. There are still some very important water projects to do and the village has approached the federal USDA funding and the state's Drinking Water Revolving Fund with a request for these remaining purchases. We had a major investment in sewer treatment as well, replacing the pump station for the entire village and town of Wapinjer. And here is an aerial view of said pump station. We went on to replace five miles of sewer lines. The 100-year-old lines were obviously letting a lot of groundwater in due to being outdated. Major upgrades are still needed at the shared sewer plant. And three municipalities are requesting funding from the state's Clean Water Revolving Fund, as previously said. Expanding this plant will spread costs over a larger number of users and it will also enable us to decommission upstream sewer plants, which will inevitably improve the Wapinjer Lake water quality. So it's a little bit of a snowball effect. Of course, all of these water sewer lines require that we dig up streets, sidewalks and curbs. And so that required us to replace the infrastructure, which meant we were given the village a new facelift. With almost 10 miles of newly paved streets, these new streets have seen a dramatic improvement in the way properties have been maintained. We understand, however, that not every street has been attacked yet. Some of the lesser-used or shorter roads still need improvement, some more than others. We do want people to know that that is still on the list for things to do. All of the past improvements to water and sewer, which totaled roughly $35 million, have been supported with almost $10 million in grants and $10 million in forgiven interests. However, it has left the village with the need to regularly increase rates by 3% a year as it was determined in 2012, when these large projects began. The village has also studied the need for drainage and developed a list of needed drainage improvements. They are first and foremost Oak Park, which needs to be drained to the ecosystem and down behind the lake in Brookside. East and West Main Streets, both of course have needs. Acquire help from the Department of Transportation, since it's part of Route 9D. And Adams Street and Goring Place are also both in need. Water quality in the village for both recreation and water use is in desperate need of remediation. 37 miles of watershed from 12 other municipalities drains into our lake. To plan for this remediation, we have a non-element plan, which studied contamination and will help provide a roadmap for the future. That is a public thing. You can read the Water Characterization Report. It's over 500 pages long, but it is chock full of really good information. Dredging, however, is the main thing we can do to remediate this. However, dredging is extremely expensive and the village has actively looking to different ways we can successfully dredge the lake while making it affordable for the village. But moving on to our parks. Some major park investments in existing parks include drainage, new playground equipment and public art. And three very impressive park projects are coming to an end in 2020. With unique benefits such as waterfront access, amphitheater, boating, arts and additional play and sports opportunities. They have received over $1.2 million in federal, state and county funding. The first of which is the Boathouse, which is a 19th century box factory, which had most recently been our highway garage until 2013. It was repurposed to be a boathouse community center that focuses on youth arts and boating. And this is planned to be finished up late this year or early next year. Franny Reese Park will finish up this fall and provide lakefront access. It will have an outdoor entertainment space with a lakeside amphitheater shown on the left. That's it in progress. And on the right, we see the Cobbler Shop, which I'm sure many people have noticed as they drive up West Main Street, the very small building at the parking lot of Franny Reese. The 100-square-foot Cobbler Shop might be used as an independent radio station run by Jason Glickser, who is a local musician and DJ who specializes in local music talent, mainly unsigned artists in and around the Hudson Valley. But again, this is all up for grabs. We could possibly use this building for an information booth or even an art gallery. Bain Park is a five-acre parcel that was filled with clean water from the street water and sewer projects. Now a level playing field, we secured funding from the county and purchased an inclusive playground for equipment for children of all ages. That will be installed in 2021. Other recreational assets that the village might want to consider would be Tom Marshall Park. It's a quarter-acre park in the Hillside Avenue neighborhood. It could be outfitted with a modest playing ground for young children. It would be nice so they don't have to cross, you know, the busy Route 9 all the time. St. Mary's School closed in 2019 after over 120 years. The 16-classroom building has a gym and a cafeteria and would lend itself well for possibly a health and wellness center. And crew enthusiasts want a large warehouse for boats. A boathouse could be included in Wapinjer Creek. However, it is an extremely expensive hobby. I actually rode crew in high school. My parents can attest to that as an extremely expensive hobby. So funding from the families who are interested would probably be asked. Park improvements have sparked economic development and revitalization. Much planning has gone into the idea of revitalization with our Brownfield Opportunity Area Program. This funding comes from New York State. This is one of the site plans for it. It's our Village Downtown Center. A lot of the projects we discuss is actually shown here. I'm sure most of you can't actually read the words. This is just a page from that. The boat will be released later this year or possibly early next year. And you'll be able to see all that, all that that entails. Mary Ross Park is at the center of the village. It's adjacent to a longtime business. And if improved, people could gather comfortably. Interest has peaked, obviously, for more outdoor dining as COVID has sent many restaurant goers outdoors. This is a rendering of what that could possibly look like. There is a short video we could show afterwards where these pictures are actually moving. But as you can see, it's a public sitting and eating area that actually wraps around the building. Fallsview Park is an underdeveloped site with an opportunity to engage private investment with a public or private venture. This site has a dramatic view of the iconic Falls Ant Bridge. A new village center building could house an art house, an eatery, an inn or offices. The land to the north could show a dramatic overlook of the falls. And shown here are three possible renderings for what that building and overlook could look like. Of course, the accessibility viewing and the buildings are all interchangeable. But this is just a nice idea of what could go there. Mill Street Parking Lot was once home to the Sweet Or Factory, where some of the first commercial denim jeans were made. Since the building came down, there has been, sorry, it has become one of the most important public parking areas in the village center. An opportunity for infill development in the village center could exist in the heart of the central business district. Parking could remain on the first floor with storefronts added. As you can see in this image right here, these would be little storefronts. The second floor would be used for parking as well with access coming through Gold Star Way via East Main Street. And then the third floor could quite possibly be office spaces or apartments with even an eco-friendly roof for recreation. Sadly, located on East Main Street, Goring Hall, built in 1872, named after former mayor Edward M. Goring, collapsed in 2012. And this has left a pretty rough scar in the village center. Now owned by Patsy's Pizzeria, however, an outdoor dining pavilion is envisioned that introduces a new way to enjoy the village center, while again adhering to, you know, outdoor dining being pushed more and more. The village is also currently looking in talks with Zion Park for shared public parking, as well as small farmers markets or seasonal shopping kiosks. I guess they would be in Mizzier Park. This is sort of a way to, you know, move some of the traffic to Upper East Main Street. And speaking of Upper East Main Street, in 2019, the United Methodist Church has finally closed down after 150 years. A private investor has looked into purchasing this property and it actually, they want public input on how they can benefit the community. So various types of businesses or practices, such as a music conservatory or child daycare or education courses or a senior center could possibly go here. And again, the private investor wants public input on what they think would best benefit the community. For over 60 years, County Players has brought in over 12,000 people to the village. And that's per year, not over 60 years. An expansion to the theater would accommodate ADA accessibility to both the seats as well as the stage and allow them to increase the number of performances each year. The expansion cost is formidable, but the village recognizes it as an important anchor and cultural resource and we fully support this concept. The Bleachery has over 30 acres of 19th century industrial area with a wealth of possibilities. There have been many past efforts to revitalize this partially remediated DEC Superfund Site and there's still much more work to do. It's now called Market Street Industrial Properties, though I know many old village people still call it the Bleachery. It has a plan to develop some of the vacant land in the Bleachery. And there's also a large building which could include an assembly brewery or event space. It's a really nice industrial building. And on 9D, many improvements have been made, starting with giving the road a little bit of a diet to decrease traffic through the village. Lovely gardens were added in front of Grenell Library and a 90-foot-wide crosswalk has been decreased to just 35 feet. Recently, sidewalks, crosswalks, lighting and crossing lights have been installed. However, East Main Street, West Main Street and South Avenue, outside the village center, we understand are still sorely in need of similar improvements. Much good redevelopment has come from these massive infrastructure investments. And this has been made from you, the community. Through the village residents and businesses alike have improved their properties. And this is some of the many upgraded box stores on Route 9. A Route 9 transportation plan has been initiated and it contemplates a need for better pedestrian facilities, such as crosswalks, sidewalks, lighting, bus shelters and bike lanes. So that is also something we have spoken to the DOT with and are further discussing as time goes on. And that's, that's really the, the large bulk of the presentation. I thank you, anyone, for was listening. You know, this is, these are projects about your future. And while this is on slate for the future, we do understand that there's, you know, there's always more things to do and we're always looking for more ways to improve our quality of life. So with that said, your feedback is important to us. As stated, there is a link to a survey attached that will be made available to you. And I believe it should also be in the bio of the YouTube video, if you're watching from there. So yes, after this, and if you missed this and you just want to watch the, the video we released later on, the condensed video, please watch it and take the survey and, you know, any and all feedback is welcome. So thank you all very much. Oh, and I have to stop sharing.
Okay, thank you, Corey. So that is really meant to give you an overview of where we've been, what we've done. This has been a long and well-thought-out strategy that we've put together to try to get us to the place we are now. I don't think you can hear the sound from the video if I was to play that, but I'm going to be putting that up on the Facebook page after this meeting. So be sure and take a look at that. I would like to especially thank village, past village resident Bridgette Latino, who stepped up to the front and helped us put this video together. And I think, I just really encourage you to go back home and watch the video immediately as soon as you get home, because it's, it's quite a production. It was very well done. The video is meant to give a quick snapshot of what's going on in the village, the kind of investment excitement that exists here. And we know that we're poised at a very critical time while so many people are considering leaving New York City and moving north. We know that the, the market for housing has changed quite a bit. The village has long thought about plans to revitalize itself and it's done so with the idea that it very much wants to remain the core of what started out being such a good village. So it wants to stay a real village. We've heard people say that time and time again during all of our planning efforts. But we want to just say a very big thank you to Bridgette Latino for the wonderful job that she did on the video. And I encourage you to look at that after the meeting is over. So this meeting that we're having at the United Methodist Church will give each person who goes to it an opportunity to respond to the concept boards that we're going to put up. They will be put up on easels around the site. The concepts will be located there and each person will get a post, a package of Post-its and be encouraged with their own pen, their own sanitized pen, to write out ideas that they have about whether or not they like the concept, what they would like to see added to the concept, what they would like to take away from the concept or discourage from the concept and if they don't like the concept. So this is the kind of input we're looking for. And we hope you can come out and attend this meeting to discuss the seven projects that we listed before. If you don't get a chance to attend, there is also a link to a survey that was put up on the, the meeting now. And there's also a hard copies of the survey will be distributed at the library for people to pick up and we'll try to get them in different locations. You could certainly pick up one at Village Hall or you could ask your trustees to get you a copy of one. And we really would like to see a lot of people fill these out so that we can get some good feedback as to what village residents want to see in their community. Are there any questions? Okay. So we also have, I skipped over something accidentally and there's a discussion of a recognition for certain things. And this would have made a lot more sense, because what I was going to ask the board to consider was if we were to, we won't vote on this tonight, but we have been discussing the possibility of using the space near the old Hillside Avenue water tank as a park. And we, I actually asked Kevin if he would ask the Marshall boys that still live around the area, all of them, if they thought that the idea to name the park after Tom Marshall was a good idea. Tom Marshall's parents lived in the house that he lived in. There's a lot of people who descended from the Marshall family and lots of other families throughout the village. So Tommy was instrumental in recreation throughout the village through his love of sports and the way he raised his children. And he, of course, was our highway superintendent for over 20 years. So we're very interested in that. And I just wanted to get feedback from the board as to that idea and hear what, if, if that's a good way to go. Scott, you're muted.
Oh, I didn't realize. I think it's a great idea. Tommy was a good member of the community, a hard-working guy on the highway. Did things right, was always pleasant and amiable to people. And I think it would do a good honor to him. And his family's always been very active in the village and some good folks. And the, more importantly, the park itself, good location. Like Corey said in his presentation, he doesn't have to, folks won't have to travel across Main Street to get to the parks. And it's a good use for that land. The land's sitting up there, the tank's up there. So why not clean it up, make it something nice and, and make it a nice park for families out of it? I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. I agree with Scott. I think that's a wonderful idea. I didn't know personally the Marshall family, but from what you said, I think it would be, it would be a nice way to honor someone who, you know, did so much for the village. I think it's a great idea.
I agree.
Good. So we will be talking more about that with the Recreation Committee and people who are... Good. So we will be talking more about that with the Recreation Committee and people who are on our parks, and we'll figure out where that's going to go. But, but, so if, if we might soon start to be able to get it farmed up enough to take a vote on that. We also have lost quite a few people in the village of Wappingers Falls, and two of, two of our firefighters were lost in 2020, and they were from Garner Firehouse. So we are interested in asking the board if they're ready to honor these particular individuals who have served us so well. So for Clapp Avenue, West Academy Street, High Street, and Fulton Street, which isn't on here, but was supposed to be, I would have, we have been talking, and we had many people talk to us about Scott Traver being honored for his service both in the fire department and with the highway department, for Don Muzuki, who was a fireman for fifty years, over fifty years for the village of Wappingers Falls. Both of these individuals risked their life for village residents and served the village well in many other ways. West Academy Street and High Street. So the names that we were interested in getting feedback from the board on was to name, to leave Clapp Avenue, named Clapp Avenue, but, but to indicate on the sign that it was to be known in quotation marks as Don Muzuki Way, and for West Academy to be known as Garner Fireman Way, and High Street to be known as Gino de Gregorio Way, and Fulton Street to be known as Scott Traver Way. And so I just wanted to get feedback from the board on those, those names.
Sounds great. Sounds good to me.
Okay, so we could take a vote on those if you're ready, and we could get those prepared for a future installation of signs. Could we get a motion for the streets to be named as stated?
I'll put forward the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kamornik. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. So at this time, I should have done this before, but I'd like to ask the clerk to do the roll call.
Mayor Alexander.
Here.
Trustee Markajon. Absent. Trustee Davis.
Present.
Trustee Kamornik.
Here.
Trustee Huber. Absent. Trustee Penessa. Absent. Trustee Lammers.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Here.
So I just want to make this statement. I've confirmed with the village attorney that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's March thirteenth, twenty twenty Executive Order two oh two point one, and all superseding orders which suspend certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view tonight's work session meeting, and a transcript will be provided at a later date. I've done a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the clerk that this meeting has been due notice. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting Village's bulletin boards faxing to the library and news organizations, and posting a notice on the village's homepage of its website and Facebook page. So I would like to ask if we could get a motion to approve the July eighth, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth Village Board Meeting Minutes?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Davis. All those in favor?
That was Trustee Lammers.
That was Trustee Lammers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seconded by Trustee Lammers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve to pay bills as per approved warrants.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kamornik. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show I said aye. And next item on the agenda, we are interested in the JCAP, which is the Justice Court Assistance Program Grant Application. We're interested in getting permission for my, for me to sign with Village Justices Raymond C. Chase Jr. and Susan Sullivan Basilia by and on behalf of the Village of Wappingers Falls Justice Court, and further authorize Justice Court Clerk Donna Cantelmo to submit the application to the New York State Office of Court Administration to comply with the October submission date. And you should know it's whereas the village is eligible for a grant from the state of New York Unified Court System through JCAP, and whereas the Justice Chase and Basilia and Justice Court Clerk Donna Cantelmo have recommended an application for such grant be made, and whereas the same individuals have prepared the application, and whereas the application is required to be submitted to the New York State Office of Court Administration in October twenty twenty, and the application for the JCAP grant and the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one grant cycle for up to thirty thousand dollars is the limit on that grant application, and I'd like to see if we could get a motion.
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Lammers. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll do a roll call. Trustee Kamornik.
Aye.
Trustee Lammers.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, and I'd like to let the record show that Kevin Huber is on vacation and absent. Mary Penessa is at work and absent, and Billy Markajon could not be with us tonight and is absent. Okay, John Karge, do you want to talk to us about the HVAC contract?
The current contract ended July thirty-first, and I was asked to go out and get some other quotes, and I went out and looked at three, actually four was the current one, and the best one that we could get is Northland Heating Cooling. We've used them before in the village for work. They're very competitive. They're about half of what we've spent in the past for the same type of of annual service, so I recommending to, for this following year to go with Northland Heating and Cooling.
Is there any discussion from the board?
No.
If there's no discussion, could we get a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Lammers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And let the record show that the mayor voted as well because there's only three trustees here. Next item on the agenda is I would like to ask permission from the board to allow myself to sign the consent to the Village of Wappingers Falls Planning Board so that they can be, the planning board can be the lead agent on the eighty-one Market Street multifamily dwelling project, and could I get a motion? If you're not familiar with eighty-one Market Street, it's the, it's Liz Nedwell's home down Market Street on your way into the Bleachery, and it is in need of seeker because the applicant is looking to, it's got a large amount of land, and the applicant is looking to fix up the building and use it as a multifamily dwelling and do another building behind the, that existing place. So there's the planning board would have to answer all the questions about whether or not we wanted that, and this is just to give them the, the okay to lead agent.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Lammers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and let the record show that I voted aye. And so next item on the agenda is I've received a request from a village resident to install a dead end or no way out sign at the intersection of church and hillside as we had the gas issue on West Main Street, and traffic was diverted around. There were many cars who ended up going all the way south on hillside and making a left down Walker Place, which is, if, if you've been down there, there is no turnaround or much of vehicle ease of access at that location, and you're at the bottom of a hill. It's also dangerous if it's also, it would, could be dangerous if it's a snowy day or that hill is quite steep, and not to mention there's there's a house with a driveway there, and it was, it would just be a mess if we had more than two cars down there trying to turn around at the same time. Any, any discussion on that?
No. You're not enforcing anything, so the sign's really not a, I mean, it's not a local law or anything, right?
Right.
So, yeah, it fits, keep people from going there, and there's no place to turn around. It seems like the smart thing to do to me.
Yeah, yeah, particularly if people are not, I'm trying to visualize, you know, again, that, that area there, and yeah, people are trying to avoid something. I mean, a sign would just give, don't go down here, rather than going all the way down and finding out that, you know, it's going to create a problem. So, yeah, I'd agree with Scott.
Like Scott said, it's not subject to a local law.
Right. I think it's something that should have been done a long time ago, really. So I would like to make the motion.
Okay, good.
I will second it.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show I voted aye as well. Next item on the agenda, we have received, of course, actually, I'll let, we have with us Commissioner Walter Burke. Walter, would you like to ask, explain to the board the Matthew Wall promotion?
Sure. We had our partner Sergeant left last month, so I'd like to fill that vacancy with Officer Wall. He's currently a sergeant in the town of Newcastle Police Department in Westchester. He's been with us for about a year now, and he's, would serve really good on the midnight tour, the twelve to eight, because we have no supervision on that tour. Mostly works midnight, so it really gives us an advantage to have him there as a supervisor.
Okay, is there any discussion from the board?
Nope, he's a good man.
There's no discussion, could we get a motion?
I will make it.
I will second.
Seconded by Trustee Lammers. All those in favor? And let the record show I said aye as well. Okay.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that, that civil service, you know, is aware, and, and if the position is actually, you know, one that is recognized presently, and there's, there's a, we don't have to create the position, like if there's, there's a vacancy in it, in a presently created
John, you answer that?
Mayor, Mayor and Board, I do that routinely. I did verify this yesterday that we do have an open position. The Alessio left, and that position was vacated.
Thanks, John. You spoil us.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. So the there's also correspondence from the two fire companies, and I just, does one of the trustees want to share this? I don't know who, if there's somebody who attended the fire meeting.
Um, no.
So I would like to ask that we accept the correspondence that WT Garner voted in Timothy Behan as a new probationary member of the company, and SW Johnson voted in Michael Simmons as a probationary firefighter. Could I have a motion? Second?
I'll second it.
Second, so a motion by Trustee Kamornik and a second by Trustee Davis. All those in favor?
Aye.
And let the record show I said aye as well. So I would like to ask Walter Burke if he could go over the committee report, but just give me a second, and I'm going to pull it up on the screen for people to see. Okay, Walter.
Um, the really only real big increase that I really want to talk about in the report is we've, officers are increasing their vehicle and traffic stops, and it resulted in last month almost doubling the amount of moving violations that were issued. Like I said, since, you know, the last couple months, we've been kind of slowing down with what's been going on, and now that things are a little bit back to normal, we've increased vehicle and traffic stops, and it's resulting in more, more VAT summonings being issued. The rest of this stuff is pretty much, not too much different from last month.
I could verify that that's making a huge difference in the number of cases that the court, the justice court is prosecuting right now because we've been sending out the notices on behalf of the court, so I think there's going to be some revenue coming in, hope.
Okay, are there any questions from anyone on the board?
Nope. One other thing I'd like to talk about, Mayor, is the the group that was formed by the county, the governor's executive order for police mobilization and reform. The county has put a group together, a consistent police officers, police departments, village, city, and town officials, and also citizens to try to come up with a plan, so we'll have something hopefully in place by November first for us to bring back to you guys to look at, and also anyone that you have locally on your own committee to look at the reforms that we've come up with, and hopefully that will be done by November, way ahead of the April first date that we have to have it done by. So it's great that the county do this, and we have to, we don't have to do it all on our own.
That's good.
Yeah, right now the county has a, like a collaborative effort amongst all the municipalities and, and their police departments. So, you know, I, I expect that you're going to be hearing from Commissioner Burke on, in the next couple of months going forward, and we're probably going to have to come up with a citizen committee from the village to, for, for input so that we can comply with the law, because this is actually a very important initiative as our funding for our police department is directly tied to it with the state.
Um, so when would they be ready to put that committee together?
The committee has already been formed. We had our second meeting this week. We meet every two weeks, and like they've set a target of hopefully by November, beginning in November, having something put together so I can bring it back for you to look at and show a local committee on what we came up with.
No, so the local committee hasn't been formed?
No, your local committee hasn't. Remember, you spoke about some people that you were interested in.
Yeah, well, I, I think we would have that open, but I would, when would you think we could start setting that up if they've given you an indication?
Well, like I said, we're, we're aiming for November.
Okay.
After November, we could start doing it. You know, you could start talking to people now and know that after November, hopefully we'll be able to bring this plan back to the village for everyone to look at.
Okay. All right, very good. Are there any questions for Walter? I do see that call I do see that callouts are up. They're not the highest call out number that we've had in the past, but they are the highest for this year. Was the is it summer?
It's that it's vacations and we lost two full time officers and one part time officer. So that and it's a hard month to cover. So we've been having a lot more call outs, but we just put those three other officers into field training. They'll be ready to go on shifts by the end of the month. Then I also have four other officers we're looking at we're processing right now background checks. So probably by September, we should have eight new officers in the department.
Okay. And I apologize because this is the first month you're showing last year's July versus this year's July. And it is actually not the highest. And it's and it's much better than last year. So.
We've been they've been really good.
So I take back what I said and just let the record show.
No, I saw the same thing when I first looked at it. You're absolutely right.
Good job, Walter, and good job.
Yeah, it's been good. Things are doing well.
Thank you, Walter.
Okay, we're going to keep going down through the committees. We do have. So the first one is the E D C. Scott, do you want to?
No, that's going to go to reorg and reform.
Okay. And so I think while we're there, the the Wapengers Rises put out some really did a good job of getting community members together and getting volunteers to work on an initiative to decorate the new light poles. However, there is a there is a question about those light poles. And I believe we have somebody here and I thought that this while we're talking about this subject of the E D C, I'd like to ask Gene Noon if he wants to address the board. And Gene, you might be, are you? Gene, you're muted. Gene, if you were talking, you are still muted. Rich, is there any specific just or Danielle, is there any specific direction I should give to Rich to Gene? Since he's on the phone.
He can try star six. It's not letting me unmute him, though.
Yeah. So I think if you hit star six, Gene, you could you will be unmuted.
He's there.
There you go, Gene.
Okay. Um. Yes, I brought up this point of these flags. To several people. Earlier, Cindy Latino and Jack Betigan and a few others that usually are involved in this. And they pointed me to Mr. Atkinson. And I called him up and, you know, we had a very short discussion because he didn't want to hear about anything I had to say. He's quite belligerent towards the man. Uh, dared me to call the mayor, which I did. Okay. And. Lo and behold. I was talking with Mr. Carge and a few others. Everybody said they've gone through the federal program now to find out about these flags. That might be a moot point, and we might be getting ourselves into more trouble because. Let me quote this from Mrs. Atkinson, who has been. Uh, all over me on Facebook. Recently, Trent decided to spearhead a community effort to showcase some American pride on our village lampposts that have been stark for over a year. He volunteered his time to rally businesses and individuals to purchase the flags. He bought material for a local volunteer to sew on a sleeve. Okay. Right there, that makes that that flag. Uh, illegal. And desecrated. According to the flag. Protocol. Uh, he could be fined and or jailed. Because the you cannot make alterations to a flag. Okay, so I don't know how you guys want to handle this.
Gene, can you tell us what Gene, can you tell us what the before and the after is? Because it's it's a little gray to me. What what you had before they started and what happened after they altered them? I don't know what the alteration was.
Okay, well. When I hung the flags up. You know, I don't know, you know, what determined how we alter them. He just altered the flags. Which is illegal. Okay. But the the way I look at it, coming down West Main Street. The stars should be on the left side. Of the pole next to the light pole. Okay, as as tradition says. A flag should be hung that way. Okay, they're totally opposite and everything's on the right side. Now going up. I started the Knights of Columbus and took a picture there. Same thing. If you're going up the street, the flag, the stars should be on the. Left side and they're they're also on the right side. Going up the hill. Okay, and. There's been an abundance of. Uh, stuff on the Facebook about it. But, you know, legally, I think this is the problem. And I'd like to see it resolved. Either turn the flags around or take them down completely. Because at this point, by them. Uh, desecrating the flag, they're they're no longer legal.
Right.
Flag that should be hung. Okay. Um, now I also am the chairman of the St. Patrick's Parade. And I, in good faith, can't bring tens of thousands of people in here in the spring with backwards flags. So I mean, I think that would be a poor showing for the village and for. Anybody involved, you know? So I don't know what. Anything?
If I may, I need to interject a question because I want to make sure this is precise. So so I'm sure what when they put the flags up there, they put everything up in good faith. It was a community project. They were doing it. I'm not defending anybody. I'm just making a comment here. How did we determine what they did was incorrect? Where where are we where 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 are you getting? We want to make sure it's right. And where are you getting your information from, Gene?
Okay, I'm looking at the U S flag code. Okay, where it says. Uh. Flags hung in a horizontal thing, which they are, must be hung with the stars to the left. And which makes the the flag pole, the actual pole, on the light pole, the actual pole, which the light, the stat, the flag should be, the stars should be next to the pole. Okay, even though they're not over the street, but they are over the sidewalk. And I know I noticed is a two sided flag with only one pattern. Okay, so it doesn't it does matter. I mean, if you even if you turn the flag around, if you go down the wrong side, if you go down the street the wrong way, which I hope nobody drives down the right side of the street. Uh. The. Flag, the the flags are going to still be backwards, but at least going in the correct direction. The flag should be flown with the the field or the stars next to the light pole.
Okay. No, I wasn't arguing. I'm just trying to figure out exactly what you were where you were coming from. Sounds like you did your homework. I think that if I can keep talking, is it all right, Mayor? So I don't think anybody did anything. I think that maybe they did it in error because I didn't understand, you know, the U S flag code. But on the other hand, now it has to be fixed. So. Kevin Huber helped try and do that job, I think. And it looks to me like they had to be changed. You shouldn't be getting anything belligerent thrown at you. It was a community group that did it. They don't they're not really associated with the village. And I know that a lot of people were happy with the flags since they went up, but.
Yeah, it's a nice idea, but if you're going to do it, fly them right. Okay.
Can't argue that.
Or do something patriotic. I mean, they should have went with stars across the top and then the.
No reason. There's no argument.
Red, white stripes.
Gene, there's no argument. You're absolutely correct. Now we just have to have enough time to get them fixed as soon as we can. Kevin, who spearheaded that, is on vacation this week. He's back the beginning of next week. I'll have to track down Trent and find out how quickly quickly they could turn that around to correct them or remove them.
According to Mr. Atkinson, he refuses to turn them around.
Well. Well, then. We'll just have to do that by order of the board, I guess, because they need to be they need to be correct.
Okay, well, I certainly appreciate your time and effort. And like I said, they're they're not corrected. I mean, I don't I don't want to see anybody arrested or fined or anything for hanging illegal flags. But I also, you know, I live in a village here and I do a lot of stuff for the community. And I don't want to embarrass ourselves come springtime when we have up to 10,000 people here for the parade, you know?
I'm sure that we can we can get them corrected. Like I said, I don't I don't think it was intentional. There's no way that you should have got a hard time over it. But we'll we'll take a look at them, have the flags corrected. You just got to give it give us a little time to deal with. That's all.
Yeah, I think and I think he had already talked to the highway superintendent about if needed, would they be able to do this immediately? And she was able to let us know that that would be the case. You know, I what I hear is there I don't think that this village board would like to. Have anything but good words to say to the many people who worked hard, Trent included, and Ponty. And and those are just two among a few who put in a lot of time, effort and resources to put up something nice on the new light poles and want to continue doing that work. So we certainly, as a village, appreciate their hard work and what they've done to help.
Oh, no, I have no problem with that. I mean, the people that put them up were going by direction of somebody. And they obviously did it wrong. So.
Let me finish. And then so I and I do believe that there are that that the flag is actually hanging in two different directions in two different ways. So. I think there is a good argument to say that in any event that because that the flag it should be done consistently throughout. And what I hear, the people who say that it's a banner, and it doesn't matter saying is that it doesn't matter to them which way it's hanging and that there's another group of people who say that it should be done with the stars on the left. I don't think it would take a great deal of effort to just turn them to the left and to. Give the flag the utmost respect that it deserves as the people who put in all this time and hard work, bringing us.
Right, I mean, like I said, I keep saying it's the perception it is a flag, whether he wants to call it a banner or whatever it is, it's still a flag.
Looks like a flag.
Right.
So if the board's okay, we could just ask the highway department to start on that this week.
That's fine. We'll get it correct right away. Yeah, it should it should be correct. If it's going to be up there, it should be correct. There's a format and a protocol for its display. I mean, I have a flag in front of my house, so I have a lot of respect for the flag. And I and I think, yeah, we can we can get it fixed.
All right, well, I certainly appreciate your time and efforts. And. I thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate.
All right.
And also.
I'm going to hang.
You can you can.
I'm going to hang up and let you need more from me.
Okay.
You're good. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
I see somebody else has signed on. Is this to discuss this topic? Okay, so if 51843194564 wants to say anything about this topic, you're being given an opportunity. Okay, so we're going to keep going. The next item on the agenda is. The fire committee trustee Huber usually updates us on that. Is there any update? Okay, and John Carriage, would do you want to talk to us about the safety committee?
Mayor and Board, I took an inventory of all our P P E equipment that we have in the village that is allocated for employees. And we have an adequate supply in each of the four or five areas that we have. In the village, with the exception of one is short on gloves. Special thanks to County legislator Joey Cavasini, who provided us with more masks. And he is out looking to see if he can get more gloves for that department. Otherwise, we have an adequate supply.
Okay, good. Thank you. I. We did receive a comment on the village board meeting comment form from Kimberly Geralamo, who lives at on Reservoir Place, and the subject is road safety. She comments that she lives on Reservoir Place. It's supposed to be a one way road, but the cars keep coming in and out the wrong way, blocking traffic from either coming in or out. They also tend to speed through while my kids are outside playing. Somebody is going to get hurt. There are already posted signs, do not enter one way, and nobody tends to follow the signs. It's becoming annoying to back up because people come in or out to Main Street the wrong way. So there was after the storm, there was a wire down in the middle of the street on. Reservoir. But I will say this, that this is happening. Before and after that wire was taken care of also. So I'd like to see if Walter could start doing some. Information and. Telling people that they need to pay attention to that sign there on reservoir for the safety of everybody. Because I do know that if you are pulling in from East Main Street and somebody's coming out that you're not always paying attention to who's in the alley. So if you would just. Help us take a look at that road, just to make sure that it's safe.
Yeah, I'll note that for the officers in that post to check it.
Okay, recreation, Cindy?
Okay, well, to start with, I just want to give you a little update. So on the storm last week, we had some significant tree damage in the Mazzier Park. We did have Jim Basely take care of those right away because I was concerned that it was a safety issue that kids might try to be climbing on those. There is a tree to the left of the homestead that had two very large branches come down. There is other dead branches up there and it's got a large hole in it now. So that tree is going to have to come down. So I'm just kind of letting you know they I had thought they were going to take it down when they removed the limbs that were there. But they, you know, with all of the other jobs they were being called to, that's been just kind of left there for right now. It's it's no safety hazard, but that tree will probably come down. Um, with concerts, as I mentioned, we have a concert on the 21st with the big. With concerts, as I mentioned, we have a concert on the 21st with the big band sound. We have been allowing them to practice in the park. They did practice on the 5th of August and they will practice again on the 19th, which is two days before the concert. I have Jim Fedigan addressing some lighting issues that we have down in Mizzier Park. It has been extremely difficult with the lighting on the gazebo and with having to socially distance the band into the blacktop area in front of the gazebo. It's really highlighted the fact that there is a very poorly lit park at night. So we are doing some temporary extra lighting for the, the concert on Friday night. But hoping that from this will come a plan and subject, subjects, excuse me, suggestions from Jim as to what we could do to make that park brighter. I do think in, in many respects, it can be a potential safety issue because if you notice, we have a lot of tree roots coming up out of the ground in various parts of the park. And you really, in the dark, cannot see those. And so before something happens, I think we should do our due diligence to address this issue. So when we have a plan, I will come back to the board with some recommendations as to how we could possibly get this issue improved. I had spoken with the board on the workshop meeting about the Wapinjars Indian Youth Football Program wanting to use Temple Field as a practice space. And we had had conversations about that. I had her phone, I was waiting on them to get back to me as to whether they were going to move forward with their season. And they had a meeting last night and have made the decision not to go forward with the season, that they will just start up again in the springtime, recruiting people into the program, but don't have any plans to offer that program this fall. 9/11, we have, we're planning a very simple ceremony. It's not a significant year. It's the 19th anniversary, so it'll be a fairly simple ceremony in the Mizzier Park at 6 o'clock on Friday, the 11th. Halloween, we also have something going on in the Waterville, announcing what we're planning on doing for our Halloween celebration, which is to adapt it to the current COVID restrictions that are in place. Last year at the Halloween, we started a new program called Trunk or Treat. And offered people the opportunity to decorate the trunks to their car and distribute candy or prizes or whatever to trick-or-treaters through the park. Going forward with that same concept is how the, pretty much the whole event will take place. I've gotten permission from the Zion Park to use their park as well as the Mizzier Park. And what we will do is try to solicit as many participants from village residents as possible and organizations to have a trunk that they will distribute stuff to kids from. And we will Halloween parade around these. We might have a couple of other special things going on in the park, but we will not have our traditional bouncy houses and craft activities, because it's just not possible to do that. Tried to keep it on the light side for kids and just say that, you know, they were required to wear masks, but we kind of expected that with Halloween anyway. And that the social distancing would actually just allow people a lot more opportunity to admire their costumes. So try to keep it light and fun. But I think that's the way we will proceed. We might have to cancel the event, however, if, you know, if there is with going back to school, although Wapinjars has opted not to go back until possibly October. But if there is an upsurge in COVID cases in the area or whatever, and we do, we might need to, to not have the event, but we'll see what happens and play by ear. I met with the Johnson Fire Company last week. Their 150th anniversary will be in 2022, and of course, the villages is next year. So had a conversation with them about what recreation could do to assist them in a celebration. And planning to have that celebration at maybe the, sometime later towards the fall, so that we kind of are overlapping both years for them to have the celebration. They've expressed an interest in hosting a fireman's parade here in the village, which I thought was a really great idea. So we are working with them to come up with a possible date and how we will do this. They would probably be looking to do just the local companies, which could be 10 companies, I think is, is what's pretty local, is what they thought. So, and we will do a parade and try to recreate some of the things that have happened in the past and possibly events that were done in 1971. And I think that's all I have to report right now, although, you know, are there any questions about things that are going on or concerns that you might have?
Any questions for Cindy?
None.
No.
Anyone?
Great job, Cindy.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Okay, on the subject of the lake, I know that they continue to take the We Do out into the water. I think it has made a difference in the deeper parts of the lake. I know they're still struggling with some of the more shallow parts, and we did have a late start with this new piece of equipment, so we're hopeful that that continues to chip away at both the places where the where the lake is more shallow and along the edges of where the channel goes through the, the lake, there's an opportunity to, to push that back more and more each time. Also, in other news on the lake, we've been working hard on the nine-element plan and we're doing a couple of things. We have the statistics back for the ways to reduce phosphorus from the contamination that comes from upstream in the 37 miles of the creek before it enters the lake. And what we have done is we've broken down the contributions to phosphorus and contaminants by sample location, and we've started to chip away at where the best places for projects would be. And we've got two first ideas that, among others, so we've been working with all of the communities upstream about what they can do and what they already are doing to address phosphorus as it comes down the creek into the into the Wapinjar Lake. And so in this effort, we have focused a lot of effort on the sewer treatment facilities. There's 25 sewer treatment facilities upstream of Wapinjar Lake. There are five larger municipal sewer treatment facilities that are of concern. And in that effort, and for tho, that group, we have been looking at a product called BioChar. There's an opportunity to do a pilot project, the purpose of which is to prove the efficacy of treatment for a different, new and different kinds of treatments. It would be best suited to find out if there are cheaper remedies that people don't know about, because we could make all the recommendations about the more expensive remedies, but if town and village budgets are not gonna pay for that upstream, then that is not necessarily the best option. So BioChar is a product that is charcoal. It's a charcoal substance that has, that allegedly has a superior ability to soak up both nutrients and contaminants. It's actually been used in Greenwood Lake. And we have identified two different locations where this might be worth checking out. One of them is where the sewer outfall comes from a condominium just upstream of the village. And that complex has quite a few units. And we have no idea what we would find out, but we're just looking to see if the application of BioChar at that outfall would reduce the amount of nutrients, phosphorus and nitrates and contaminants. So we're concerned about phosphorus and nitrates because such heavy concentrations of phosphorus and nitrates is why it really feeds the invasive species that grows in the lake and makes it look like a big lawn. And so that is why we're very concerned about that. So we have that location and another location further upstream near the airport, where there's actually a pond that is just by sight. You can see that it is holding lots of nutrients in it. There's a dam in front of the pond and it lets water from that pond go over into a tributary that goes down into the Wapinjar Creek. And so we're interested in studying the effect of BioChar there. So those two projects would be no more than $50,000. We have a grant from the Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Program for this nine-element plan that is recommended by the EPA. And we would like to move forward with that. So I'm just bringing that up as a, as an item that we will be looking more into and just as information for you. So are there any questions about the lake?
I have one, not about your second comment, but your first one. The, the We Do.
Yes.
A song out cutting on Saturday, Saturday or Sunday, Sunday, I guess it was. And they spent a considerable amount of time out there, a lot of time spent on the channel. I don't, I couldn't see, where are they putting the materials? There was nothing, there's nothing attached to them. They weren't gathering anything. They were just cutting. Am I, is there, are they doing it a different way than we used to do it before, or, or am I, I don't?
I think you'd have to, yeah, we'd have to talk to Kevin to get the information about that. I wouldn't be able to answer that.
I think we were back out there on the lake again today and it looked like they were scooping up stuff.
Oh, maybe.
I think maybe they're, they're dumping it on the backside of this Wapinjar Cemetery. There's a place there that they've been dumping it, but it looked like they were shoveling whatever was off on the top. That was probably, I don't know, about 10 o'clock this morning. So I don't know if that would have been out there. I mean, Kevin has, you know, quite, I think he's got six volunteers that do it, so I don't know exactly who was out there doing it. But I think that's what was going on today. He's been cutting it over the weekend and then when it's been, it's pretty hot out there too.
Yeah, no, I know. I, I just, that's how, wasn't exactly how we were doing it before. Maybe there's a method that I'm unaware of, but that's why I asked.
Well, so the We Do has a rake that actually scoops into the silt and is supposed to be able to pick out the weeds by the roots instead of just chopping off the heads of the weeds. So that's one of the reasons we liked this, but, but I can't answer if that's what they were doing without talking to them. But I, I think we should have Kevin talk to us more about how they're doing it.
Right.
Okay. If there's no other questions about the lake from anyone, okay, the water, the water board continues to look at the issues surrounding the filtration. We are finalizing the USDA application still, that actually has not been submitted yet. There's another application also going into the Environmental Facilities Corporation for a water grant. So that water grant has not been announced yet, but we have already put in the paperwork that would make us eligible for it when it is announced. And there will be an application that follows that. Are there any questions about water?
Nope.
Okay, personnel, Scott?
Nothing. We're full boat and everything's been fine. There's been no issues. We've been in police negotiations and there's some light at the end of the tunnel, but that's, that's about it.
So on the sewer portion, the village has been also working on another project with Tri-Muni. That's with the towns of Wapinjar and Poughkeepsie. And we're interested in submitting an application through the same organization that I was talking about for water, which would allow us to do needed capital improvements that we need anyway. It would also increase the capacity at the sewer treatment facility. And it would take care of our 35-year-old surge tank, which collects excess sewage and rain events. We've already found a way to manage that excess sewage better. And that's important to us because the inflow, the inflow and infiltration that comes through the sewer system is something that costs each one of us more money. So those projects are moving forward and we hope to, we're waiting for that application date and guidance to come out for the sewer application. On the grant side, we are also waiting for the downtown revitalization initiative to come out. And the reason that we're interested in having this public meeting on August 15th to collect input from the public is because we want to show the state that we have been collecting that information and that our projects are more ready to go than our competitors. And so in that effort, we believe that if we can show them that, we will have a much better application. We still have some heavy competition. The Mid-Hudson region is by far one of the most competitive regions in the state. It has typically, you know, there's some regions in the state that only get one application each round. And we have had 36 applications in it at one time. So they're looking for one municipality to give $10 million to. We have gotten feedback from the Empire State Development Corporation to just keep doing what we're doing and keep showing up. And we intend to keep doing that and make our application better and better each time. There's no guidance on that application yet, and nobody knows what is going to happen with that in the future, but we have every indication that it is going to happen. On the finance side, I did get a question asking when our last audit was and what is going on with that now. So the last time we had a review of the village, we're not required to have an audit, was in 2018. We reviewed the, we had a independent review, not audit, of the police line items for the initiative that was before the taxpayers. And that led us to the discussion of doing a series of two reviews and an audit. So the next time that there will be an audit, an independent audit is going to be of the year that we're in now. And like, the auditors are here now. They're doing a review and there's two things that they need to do as part of this for the audit in the future, and that's a test of controls. And also they are doing a a review to check the beginning balances. So it's very important that they keep up with the beginning balances and be able to prove them out before they start the audit. When they do the review, they do these same kinds of tests, but they're not testing to the same level. So we, we feel good about where we've been going with this audit so far. It did hit a roadblock when we got into the pandemic and the shutdown. And the other thing that has held us up is the fact that we've had three treasurers in the last couple of years. So the most recent addition to the village staff is the CPA. So this is the first time that we've had a certified public accountant as our treasurer, and she is more than capable of getting us through that. And so we will be letting you more, know more how that comes out in the future. That's it. Before we open it up for public comment, I'd like to ask the board members if they have anything that they want to bring up at this time.
Mayor, Board, it's John Carriage.
John.
I'd like to say that as chief election officer, the, the election, the election that was to be held back in March will be held on September 15th, consistent with election law. I would also like to say that as the chairman of the safety committee for the village, I will be present that day and making sure that everyone conforms with the rules relative to COVID. I will be present that day and making sure that everyone conforms with the rules relative to COVID-19 safety.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anything from the board?
Yeah, I wanted to go back and revisit something we talked about earlier. And that was the, uh, two young men that, uh, joined the both firehouses, uh, Tim Behan and Mike, Mike Simons. Uh, I guess it's Simons or Simmons. If I'm pronouncing it wrong, I'm sorry. Um, I know Tim, uh, know his family. Just wanted to thank those two young men for stepping up and joining. Um, and get the word out there. If there's other, other kids out there, those other, uh, young adults out there, male or female, that are interested in joining the fire departments or a volunteer department. And we need all the volunteers we can get. Uh, great news that both of those kids stepped up and, um, uh, we thank them and we, that we hope they stay around a long time and, um, help us, uh, stay safe here in the village. Just wanted to readdress that.
Okay, very good. Congratulations to those two, uh, young men. And we appreciate their, uh, contribution to service for us. Anything else? Cindy, do you have anything else for us? Walter?
No.
This time there's, it's open for open comments. If you're on the YouTube channel and you want to make a comment, you can log into the Zoom meeting by going onto the village website and, and looking at the link for this meeting. Are there any public comments?
Hi, Mayor Matt and Village Board. This is Courtney Cold, uh, 2663 East Main Street and also home address 37 Old State Road. I apologize. Let me know. Hear me, I'm just on a, on a road. Um, I did not submit the public comment about the audit, but I do have a follow-up question to that. Um, I, I think I can just ask the question, is that audit you're referring to the New York State Comptroller audit? Or a different audit that you had mentioned was in 2018?
That was a review by an independent accounting firm.
Okay, what, who, who is the accounting firm? Is it someone the village hires?
Yes, it's an independent firm.
Are you able to share the name?
Yeah, it's R, RBT CPAs.
Okay, when was the last time the New York State Comptroller did, uh, an audit of the village?
Probably 2012.
Okay, and is that the, um, like thorough, more, more thorough audit? Or is that exactly the same thing as like what a third-party review would be?
They'd come in and they work on, I mean, you can talk to them, but they, they, um, do all kinds of different audits. For us, they did an audit of our payables.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the difference between a third-party review um, and a New York State Comptroller audit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, uh, I think we're ready for, um, executive session now unless there's another comment from anybody else. Could I have a motion to go into executive for the purpose of discussing personnel? Um, bargaining unit negotiation? And Craig, is there anything else that you need to talk to us about in executive?
No.
Okay, uh, could I get a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Lammers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, I said aye and, uh, we'll go into, and, oh, oh, excuse me. I also need to ask that Walter Burke join us in the executive session.
Okay, Matt, um, are you not coming back for a vote, correct?
Uh, I don't know for sure. I don't think so. I don't think so, but it's possible we could.